All right, I want to welcome you all to today's town hall and forum on Common Core and Park. And my name's Jason Berwickman. For those of you who don't know, I have the privilege of representing the ISU community here where we're at, so thank you to ISU for being our hosts. And welcome to all of you who are in attendance today. We've got a lot of information that we want to move through quickly so that we can get to your questions and feedback today. First, I want to thank, we've got a diverse panel here who are going to give some different perspectives of some of what they've, some of their observations on whether Common Core, the park tests that they're, some are in the middle of implementing. They also have one of my colleagues with me, Senator Chapin Rose. I'm going to be the moderator today, and I'm going to first be charged with making sure our panel sticks to a very efficient timeframe to get us through some of their opening comments and then get to your questions, which we're on schedule to get to at roughly 6:45. We're going to get out of here by 7:30 because some of you have said that there's something going on with Duke and some school that is usually a competitor to U of I in Illinois, or ISU, but I see a Wisconsin shirt in the crowd, so we'll get you all out of here on time. A couple of just housekeeping matters, I know that we have Susan Nguyen-Bentz here, who is here on behalf of State Representative Tom Bennett, Representative Dan Brady, although I haven't seen him yet, I think is going to make his appearance. For those of you who know Dan, you know what I mean. Plenty of know. And you may have received one of these when you checked in that says that there's a survey. Evidently, the survey link's not working correctly. If you go to my website, jasonberwickman.org, or Chapin's, he'll give you his, and you'll see him on the slides, you can get to that survey. We're interested in your feedback. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chapin. Chapin's going to walk us through a little bit of the background. Chapin is one of my colleagues, is a state senator who hails from the Mohammed area. Chapin Rose?
Thanks for everybody being here. As a little line, I can't believe I'm getting ready to say "Go Wisconsin," but "Go Wisconsin." Got one guy right there. We are here tonight to gather some information on the state of the Common Core transition in Illinois, as well as the recently completed first round of park testing. Want to go in a little bit of background on both those, tell you a little bit where they came from, and mainly want to hear from the audiences to how they see this taking shape or not taking shape. My own personal background as a parent of current fourth and fifth grader, we've had, I think, some serious trouble in the implementation of Common Core, particularly in the area of math. As a legislator, I've heard from virtually all my superintendents about park testing. On one of the, actually interesting comment was made the other day to me by an educator on the implementation of Common Core is, it was just sort of dropped on the education committee and said, like a light, turn on a light switch and okay, go. And they really didn't have the curriculum, the textbooks, anything really to advise teachers how to teach, what to teach. And they were sort of struggling to get that out there. And certainly as a parent at that age level, we felt that with our own children, and many of my other parents you talked to at the ball field or wherever, particularly in that same age range, struggled. A little bit about me, I, you know, I'm, I have a Montessori background, so I have absolutely no problem with the, you know, outside the box thinking that is supposedly the hallmark of Common Core. But as with anything, there are critics, and something that caught my eye was this piece by Marina Ratner that was in the Wall Street Journal that was handed out. And Ms. Ratner has won virtually every prize in mathematics available other than the Nobel Prize. And if you actually Google tonight, when you're bored, the International Ostrowski Prize that she won in 1993, you'll tell you that this lady has no shortage of legitimate credentials in the field of math. As with anything that is critical, there are always critics of critics. And when you Google her, you'll find criticism of her criticisms. But again, tonight, I think our goal is to hear from our panelists and hear from the general public about how you feel about it. It'd be interesting seeing how people, people's impressions here, you know, a couple of years into the Common Core change and just now having been on the tail end of the first of the park tests. So with that, a little bit of history, and hopefully I can make this work. Common Core standards are the new set of educational standards, I think everybody knows that, for K through 12 in Illinois. Developed in 2009, released in 2010, led by a small organization called Student Achievement Partners, which was an initiative of the National Governors' Association. The advocates said that this is a way to improve test scores by making sure that students everywhere in every grade were taught using the same standards. Illinois adopted Common Core, the State Board of Education, in 2010. Their standards were fully implemented in 2013, 2014. And again, I think, I think it would be more than a fair criticism to say that it was implemented in a very poor way from the State Board of Education. It was really just sort of, and many school districts were left grasping for what to implement and how to implement it. Many controversies surrounding it. Some have criticized that it undermines local control, local school boards lose control of standards. Parents, obviously, limits their say on the local control basis. Teachers, I've heard from many teachers, and there's going to be a statistic here that's very interesting in a minute, and most of the teachers I talked to start off with, "Well, we really liked the idea about trying to expand outside the box thinking, but," and there's always a "but." And the "but" usually comes into the lack of resources to supplement and support. Some of the curriculum that's used in the testing has been used, has been very, very well criticized, and frankly, in my opinion, in many cases rightly so criticized. Here's an interesting statistic. When it first came out, 12% of teachers opposed it. Within a year, 40% opposed it. That's a pretty interesting statistic. You know, something, you hear this all the time, and when you get to the park discussions, it's become more relevant, but there is more classroom time now devoted to testing under this new curriculum. And then you get the infamous Common Core question to Jack, and you're supposed to explain to Jack what he did wrong on his test. And his dad writes back, "I have a bachelor's degree in science in electronic, electrical engineering, intensive study in differential equations and other higher math applications. Even I cannot explain the Common Core mathematics approach, nor get the answer correct. In the real world, simplification is valued over complication, therefore, 427 minus 316 equals 111. This answer is derived in less than five seconds." And then the parent goes on to say, "The process used is ridiculous and would result in termination in an employment setting if used." The other famous one that you've seen is this kid who's asked to explain his answer, and his answer is, "I got the answer by talking in my brain and agreed with what my brain said," essentially. "As a parent, I can tell you the dumbest test question I've ever seen from Common Core was something in order is, 'Two times eight equaling sixteen,' a reasonable answer, and if so, explain why." The answer I wrote for my fourth grader was, "Yes, it's the reasonable answer because it's the correct answer. What a dumb question." So, anyway, if you look at Dr. Ratner's concepts here, one of the things that she notes is that in fact, for the state of California anyway, while this was supposed to be higher standards that were harder, they were in fact actually inferior to the old California standards in rigor depth and scope of topics, and noted a number of things that were left out entirely in the earlier grades. Look, there's going to be critics and there's going to be supporters, we know that. We are into this, and we want to hear what you have to say. So, we're going to skip on to the park portion. So, park is a testing that was just completed in grades three through eight on English, Language Arts, and Mathematics, and it's supposed to be done online. This is also one of the national standards. That is not accurate in all cases. Many of our schools have managed to move to online testing, many have not. I know I talked to some folks last week that were still using paper tests. This actually, quite not insignificantly, has caused serious problems regarding our rural parts of the state with our schools getting caught up to the technology standards necessary. The state of Illinois actually had to devote extra resources, a 99% increase in the assessment line, to help the state fund the park tests. School districts have spent literally millions in, by default, local property taxpayers and state taxpayers in upgrades their computer systems to take park. One of the big criticisms, which is a huge, in fact, actually accurate criticism at the time, right now, is that park is unknown to most higher educational institutions and is not accepted for college admissions. So, when you talk about having to take time out of the classroom for testing, now you have to take your kids out and go take the ACT test on top of this, whereas, you know, prior you'd take the ACT or the Prairie State Achievement Test, and ACT, you could then forward that score on to whatever college your child was wanting to apply to. Now, you're going to have to do that separately. Of course, the parents' cost. There've been a number of testing and process-related issues with it, from Park's own website. When logging into the second test session, some students would receive an error message. One critic, Diane Ravitic, and interesting enough, Diane spent most of her time not taking an opinion on Common Core one way or the other, or park, but then finally opined, and she's at, I believe, NYU, or one of the State University of New York Systems, and is an educational historian, and has been highly critical of these tests lend themselves to people who have better keyboard skills than necessarily knowledge, and not an accurate reflection. Obviously, here in this community, we had the now infamous walkout, and I think we're going to listen to some of those students, and maybe some of their parents. Interesting, I had this email to me from one of my superintendents, and it bubbled up from his teachers in the eighth grade, and basically, they were very concerned about the, some of the material being very kind of dark and morose in a way. Talked about killing a skunk by suffocating him with a rock, then burning him to death in a pit. The passage of the Oliver Twist, which is the principal, or the superintendent noted, which is a classic, the part that was used is about cannibalism and being hanged. And essentially, many of his teachers felt there were some pretty, you know, dark themes involved here. These are not my words, these are from one of my superintendents. I then asked another couple of supes if they had found the same issues, and many of them had said that their teachers had commented, yeah, they thought there, it was maybe perhaps very dark material. All this leads us to what we felt, Jason and I and several others, was a very simple request to simply delay the implementation of park by a single year. And that would have come up in, last year in 2014. With this coming, the technology wasn't there, the classrooms weren't up to speed, the testing materials had not had time to be looked over. In fact, one of Ravitic's, Diane Ravitic's main comments about her decision to oppose Common Core was just simply that you've turned the whole nation into a bunch of guinea pigs with any completely untested, unfield-tested material that, you know, our children are getting for the first time. And, you know, it's interesting when someone of her stature says that. But anyway, we thought there was a very reasonable, logical request for a one-year extension, again, just based on the technology. Many of our rural school districts didn't have it. We begged, we pleaded with the State Board of Education to please just delay this for a year, let the technology catch up with what was coming at it. And the answer on that was no, and ultimately, we were outvoted. That's basically a quick history of Common Core and Park, and now we want to listen to you. I would again say that we're going to open this up, but if you check our websites, there will be a survey on both Jason's and I's websites by tomorrow morning. We'd like your information and your opinions. I will simply leave you with this, which I found was wholly and completely unscientific, but told me most, everything I needed to know. I asked my wife to put it on her Facebook page at 10:48 PM one night, what her friends thought of elementary school Common Core math. And by about 10:00 AM the next morning, we had close to 200 responses from real people. Real parents, these are not activists, these are not, you know, conservatives or liberals or whatever, they're parents. And it was virtually all negative. Most of them had something, "Well, we don't have any problem with the outside the box, but it's not ready for prime time." And I thought that was a very interesting, real-world experience there, and it really quite literally went viral on her Facebook. So, we're going to see what everybody else has to say about that tonight, and I'm interested in those opinions. Thanks.
Thanks, Chapin. We're going to hear from five administrators, and I just asked them to maybe come, I don't know if you all have the time in front of you, but let's start with Dr. Worley, and then just proceed through kind of efficiently.
I'm Rich Worley, I'm principal at Eureka High School. I am not a doctor, but my son's in med school, so he may be eventually. I've been at Eureka since 95. We've worked really hard at increasing our ACT scores over the years, and I'll be honest with you, about early 2000s, when they said all students were going to be tested, I was not a fan of that. But, at the same time, I thought, you know, we need to ensure all kids are college and career-ready, and we really strive to do that. And so, we've worked really hard to align our curriculum, to prepare those kids for the rigors of college. And back in the day when kids were taking it only that were college-bound, you know, our scores were hovering around 20, 21, somewhere in there, on average. And actually, the last few years, our average is higher when we're testing all kids than just testing the college-bound. So, we're very proud of that. And about a year ago, I heard that ACT was going to go away, and I wasn't real happy about that. And I'm not political, but I decided to use any means to get that back because I thought it was beneficial for kids. So, at that time, I started sending, you know, emails and calling people that are lobbyists for me, like the Illinois Principals Association representatives, and just saying, "Hey, you know, can you do something about this? Because the park's coming, but the ACT is really beneficial to us, and we'd like to see it stay for all kids, not just the college-bound." Because some kids, to be very honest with you, don't know that they're college-bound. They don't know that they're going to score high enough to go, or they've been told, "Hey, you don't have enough money," or "You're not going to be able to succeed in college." And then when they get the score back, they're like, "Wow, I got a 25. You know, I can do this. I can go anywhere I want." So, we find that very, very good for our students. And we're a rural school, if you don't know where Eureka is. So, I started politicking, then all of a sudden, in June, I was reading the state budget. You know, I was getting no information from the state. I was getting no information from the state superintendent about, you know, was there going to be a change, or was the ACT going back, coming back. We just heard it was gone. And all of a sudden, I read the state budget, and I saw a line item that said the ACT was back in the budget. And I'm like, hmm, that's interesting. So, I started calling all the other principals in the area and said, "Do you really understand that the ACT is coming back next year?" And they're like, "No, it's not." And lo and behold, it was. It came back again this year, the first year that park was implemented. The problem I see, though, with park is, you know, not only the number or the hours that students are being tested and pulled out, but in a small school like ours, you know, the technology, we're doing the online version, is being pulled from the kids in the other classes because we don't have a one-on-one program. In fact, we had to loan some of our Chromebooks to the elementaries because they just had iPads in one lab. So, we lost our Chromebooks for general use for two weeks in the classroom. And, you know, we're just getting used to it. We're, you know, we've been using Chromebooks for a couple of years. We're a Google school, we do everything Google, and so to pull that makes it, makes it a little tough. The other problem I see now is what they did with the ACT. When they moved it up to March 3rd, when it was normally given in April, gave us less time to prepare our kids. And that was very frustrating for us as a school, you know, because we felt like we lost class time. And then, not only did we lose class time, when the park was being implemented, we lost all of that time as well because we were testing kids. So, it just became a never-ending cycle of losing instructional time, you know, pushing the kids harder than they've ever been pushed. And then came the opt-out phase of the problems we had to deal with. You know, we were told by the state, there is no opt-out, you know, and we're not used to that because, you know, as a high school district, ACT, nobody's ever asked to opt out of that. Nobody's ever said, "I'm not taking that, Mr. Worley." You know, they just all do, and they all understand the importance. Kids these days are a lot smarter than you give them credit for sometimes, and they can get on the internet, and they can read what's going on, they understand, you know, the politics behind park and Common Core. And you start seeing things that happened at Unit 5, and you start seeing things that snowball elsewhere. And we ended up losing about, we told our kids, "You can't opt out, but you can refuse," you know, "You can refuse to take the test." And about 20 of our kids, which is a small school, we're, we're only testing 120. 20's a large percentage for us. So, we had kids not taking the test. Part of the problem with that, though, is if we were to send them back to class, because we were, we were pulling them out of class to test, that we would have had a larger percentage than that. So, basically, they just had to sit there and work on homework or do whatever, read a book. And I just felt that was a loss, a loss of instructional time as well. And just, it's a little frustrating. And so, after, or right before all that happened, I actually was sending a few more emails out, and I've really never done that. I've been in education 30 years, and I've really never done that. And I did it again. And then Jason's office called and said, "Hey, we want you to be on a panel." And I said, "Why me?" And they said, "Because of your letter." And I'm like, hmm. All right.
That's how that works.
I know. So, I figured if I'm going to write a letter, I need to come up and be a panelist and walk the walk. I did just get back in town 30 minutes ago. I was in Chicago. I'm a diehard Cub fan, so I was at opening night last night. And it wasn't as bad as people say, other than the Cubs lost. So, I appreciate you all coming out, especially the Wisconsin fan in the crowd, and hearing us, hearing some of our frustrations. You know, the new Illinois learning standards at the high school level hasn't really changed things all that much at the high school, so I'm not going to get into that. It's just the testing and the assessment, and the number of hours we're spending just getting ready for it, and losing class time that I'm more frustrated about. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Eisenhower, and I may, now Chapin took us over time, Chapin, but I may give a little, which is our sign, so we can, all right, go.
How are you doing? I'm Jeff Eisenhower, and I am from Prairie View Ogden. Most of you don't know where that is. It's about, I want to say, eight miles north of Urbana and six miles east. So, if you can imagine the countryside there, we are 114 square miles of farmland is our district. So, we are one of those small districts that doesn't have the internet capability to do the park testing online. We are one of the districts that got the paper pencil version, and thankfully so. Our internet's still coming over the telephone line at our junior high. So, we don't have the capability to fully implement park like they would like for it to be implemented. Chapin asked me to talk about the Common Core. My history is, I was a math teacher in Champaign for four years, high school math. So, I could see what the students were like coming into the high school level, and there was a large percentage of them that were not prepared for high school math. I am not against the Common Core state standards. What I don't like is how they are implemented. They were just kind of thrown at the teachers right at the time that the textbook rental was being cut, and right at the time that all school funding was cut. And so, the teachers are told, "Here you go. Go find your supplemental material to implement these." Now, I'm an elementary K-8 principal, and so we were working directly with our high school to raise our standards before the Common Course came out. At our junior high level, it wasn't so bad. However, at the third grade level, when your, the Common Course come out, and all of a sudden, it's a fourth grade curriculum at the third grade level, and it's just thrown at us, it makes it difficult for those kids that were in second grade going into third grade and being expected to do fourth grade math. Even though we saw them coming, we tried to supplement it for the two or three years leading into it because we knew it was coming, but it's still not effective. And so, all of our teachers are trying to play catch-up. We're always being told that we're failing. However, we are a high-performing district. A lot of the high school administrators say the ISATs don't really mean anything. They do. They just don't match up to the ACT. But if you look at the ISAT scores, we were a very high-performing district. Our students were very successful at the high school level. And now, we're trying to fight with the park, trying to work with it. A lot of the downfalls of the park, in my opinion, are the total minutes. For third grade, you've got windows of 75 minutes, 75 minutes, 75 minutes, 75 minutes. Oh, by the way, there's seven 75-minute windows for third graders. And Chapin, I'm going to pick on you a little bit.
It's okay.
Chapin was at my school last week, talking to fourth, fifth, and sixth graders for about 35, 40 minutes. Fourth, fifth, and sixth graders couldn't sit still for 40 minutes, let alone third graders trying to sit still for 75 minutes. So, I'm not a big fan of the park. It's here, though, and we need to figure out what to do with it. There, I can, I've got a whole list of the reasons why I'm not a fan, and I'm more than happy to answer questions. But the Common Cores are a good thing. We need to raise the bar. It just needs to be implemented differently.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Lindy, I think I skipped over you. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you for elevating me to doctor status. I appreciate that. It'll save me some tuition money. I appreciate that. My wife appreciates it. Thank you. My name is Mike Lindy, and I'm Superintendent El Paso Gridley, Unit District 11. We're located about 20 minutes north where we're sitting right now. We're a primarily rural, rural district. However, we're on the edge of Bloomington Normal, and so that gives us a little bit of unique character. I'm not a politician. I'm an educator, and I work with 110 wonderful educators that work very hard to do the very best for kids. Our focus isn't on test scores. Assessment is important, curriculum is important, standards are important. But what's more important is preparing our kids for the dreams and aspirations that they have. And I think standards, curriculum, assessment, all feed into that, but there are other things that are important in the lives of kids. Things that are enriching in curriculum like the arts and music, physical education, industrial STEM education, but also extracurriculars and activities. And those are all very important in a kid's life, and each and every one of those suffers when we lose balance. And I think part of what we've done here is lose balance. And that loss of balance started back when NCLB was implemented. NCLB is, in my 20 years as an educator, one of the most far-reaching educational initiatives by the federal government, the singular educational initiative. And that's what put the onus on math-only and reading-only assessment. And since that time, since that started, we've been assessing out of kilter with these large, high-stakes assessments. Now, the Common Core standards, which are now the new Illinois learning standards, are actually a good set of standards. What I don't hear anybody talking about is the fact that there's an existence of the 1997 Illinois learning standards. People forget those existed, and that we were expected to have our curriculum aligned with the Illinois learning standards. And I would welcome any one of you to come on, stop by my office. I have them printed out, and I'll let you read. I will have a cot in my office for you because it will put you right to sleep. They are vague, they are unspecific, they are nearly impossible to follow and align curriculum and instruction to. So, while imperfect, the Common Core standards, or the new Illinois learning standards, are an improvement. What the state does not do regularly, and what good school districts like ours and most of the ones represented here do regularly, is we constantly evaluate our practices. The state does not do that. They throw something out there, they leave it on a shelf for 20 years and tell you to get in line, figure it out, whatever. If we would take the approach of constantly evaluating and improving our standards, we would find that those problems with math, and I heard Chapin express concerns about that, and I share those concerns, as do most of the educators know that I know, they have those concerns. We could make some improvements into that and adjust those standards so they better fit the needs of kids. But what happens, and where you see these odd questions, these math questions that don't have a reasonable answer, is when districts abdicate their responsibility for creating their own curriculum. And our teachers in our district have been creating our own local curriculum based on our own local content, set to our own local standards. And we've been doing that for the better part of two years now. And our staff, which are our educational experts, are doing a wonderful job of it. I report to the board regularly, and we've spent an enormous amount of time and enormous amount of money that was not supported by the state of Illinois, or anybody but our local citizens. They support us. And that's maybe a problem that we all share, is that there's a lack of resources being sent to us by the state of Illinois. And maybe that's why the Common Core standards were so poorly supported by the ISB, is because they don't have the resources. Park, same thing. Poorly implemented, and I think it was a missed opportunity. We could have invested in Illinois, invested in the resources that we have in the state of Illinois, and the resource we have locally. We have many, many fine universities in the state, state of Illinois. We could have leveraged their abilities and their resources and created our own assessment that we could use to guide instruction. The only real value to assessment is not to tell us what a kid can or can't do, but to guide instruction and help us grow the child, because every kid doesn't come to our door the same way. And so, we need to grow them from where they're at. And so, we need to grow them from where they're at. And I'm fortunate to work with a group of people that do a wonderful job of that, as most of the teachers that I've ever met in my life. But we try to use these assessments to identify and evaluate either a group of kids, a group of teachers, or a community, and that's unreasonable. And I don't know any other place that does anything like that. So, Park was a missed opportunity. It was poorly implemented. Our district is fortunate. We have the bandwidth and the resources necessary to implement it. We have very hard-working people that helped make it a very smooth process. Yet, it was still very poorly implemented. It's not gonna inform instruction, and so, I just don't see the value. And we could've done something completely different, been unique, taken local control or state control of this process. Instead, we failed to do that. And again, it's probably because the ISB doesn't have the resources. And there again is a commonality. Education doesn't need reform in the state of Illinois. Now, when you equalize for poverty, the United States is in the top three in every category in instruction. But what we don't have, and what we keep talking about, is how important it is for education. Education is a priority to everyone on the campaign trail, but what we don't do is we don't support it in the way it needs to be done. I think we need to be focusing on establishing the resources necessary to make sure that each and every student that walks through our door, regardless of where they're at when they get there, is able to meet their dreams and aspirations when they leave our doors and go on to that next step and be successful. And part of that is for the state of Illinois to quit talking and take action and properly support our schools. If we'd had proper support for our schools and proper resources, these problems with implementation wouldn't be there. We would be able to control our own destiny, and our districts would be able to control their own destinies. I'm just very fortunate that I live in a district and work in a district where we're able to take control, decide our curriculum, but we still have to operate under these onerous, excuse me, onerous requirements of the state that aren't properly supported. And that's where I see our main problem. And it really comes down to funding. You know, it's like the movie The Right Stuff. What makes rockets go? Funding. And that's the fuel that turns the wheel. People are the ones that do the actual work, but we still need the proper funding. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. I'll try again, Dr. Riley.
Well, thank you, Senator. Well, I'm glad to be here. Barry Riley from Bloomington District Eighty-Seven Schools. We have fifty-five hundred students, and we're considered a large unit district in the state of Illinois along with Unit Five. I would tell you tonight, you don't have a teacher sitting up here on a panel. I would encourage you at some point in time, if you haven't done so, to please speak to a teacher, because that's a perspective that you're missing, at least up here, so make sure that you do that. In addition to some of the things that my colleague said, I'm gonna talk a little bit about how we're being impacted by funding and tie that to Park and the Common Core standards as well. I think everybody's aware that we recently experienced a two-and-a-quarter percent cut to our funding, to our mandated categoricals. We're likely, actually, that is to our general state aid. We're likely not going to get our third quarter, along with our fourth quarter mandated categoricals for Bloomington District Eighty-Seven. We're talking in the neighborhood of one-point-five million dollars just for those payments alone. For the two-and-a-quarter percent, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for my district. I certainly would've preferred that instead of investing a lot of money into a new testing system, that we took care of our financial issues in this state before we even moved in that direction. And in addition to that, we're prorated at about eighty-nine percent of our funding for general state aid. We currently don't get all our funding that we're supposed to. And yet, we're investing a lot of time and energy. And I can tell you, if you spoke to a teacher, they'll tell you. They'll tell you about the time, the effort. I could probably say blood, certainly sweat and tears that they put into helping to align our curriculum to the Common Core standards and align our curriculum to be able to help our kids perform on the Park exam. And we spent a lot of money to get ready for that. We are fortunate in terms of being a district that has the resources right now, but those resources are dwindling every year. We are in a deficit spending mode and have done so for the last several years, in large part because the revenues keep getting less and less. And yet, we're investing in something like this. I would've much preferred that we did not do that. So, again, I would encourage you to take time to talk to those folks who are actually living this. They've done it one time. They're gonna do it here again. Like my colleagues, I agree, we do it too much in terms of the testing. There's actually a first and a second test that is likely gonna be put out there at some point in time, and we will be asked to implement that. The state won't pay for it, so don't count on us to do that. And I don't think anybody sitting up here is anxious to add two more tests to be able to give to our students. And I guess I'll end with, we don't have to test every single student based on what we're using it for. It'd be nice to just have a sampling of students. We heard from a principal that gave the example of how much time we're talking for young children, but that's true across the board, and that's in part why you're seeing certain kids decide and parents that we're just going to refuse to take this test. I don't see that going away. I see that growing. But certainly, I echo some of the comments that my colleague Mike made. There are good things about Common Core standards. They certainly are rigorous, and we've worked hard to align our curriculum. God forbid if it comes to a point where they just, people decide that we need these repealed. Teachers and educators are gonna throw up their arms and say, what do you want from us? We've done everything that's been asked of us and then some, and we're doing it with fewer resources today than we did three, four, five, six, seven years ago. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to my colleague.
Sure. And Dr. Daniel.
Hello. I'm Mark Daniel, Superintendent Unit Five. I hear this discussion this evening, and I'd just like to let you know, today I spent about seven and a half hours in a joint committee work focusing on basically assessments. Assessments that are going to drive teacher evaluation. Now, that also will drive administrator evaluation, and it drives my evaluation. My point being is, we are using metrics to the point where perhaps we need to rethink this a bit. As Dr. Riley said, when we have budget scenarios that exist today, is there a better way to use those resources? Because we are spending literally billions of dollars across the country in regards to testing. If you would read materials from Diane Ravitch, she is an adamant, adamant person in regards to, we are testing too much in our country today. At the same time, look at our economy compared to global economy. We do wonderful things in our public schools. We do wonderful things when you compare us to other countries and their economies. Where do they want their, who are they trying to emulate? They're now coming to our schools and saying, we need that creativity. We need those, that total student experience. So, I wanna just say, we have Park because absolutely we're tied to No Child Left Behind, which is tied to funding. We couldn't do without that funding. As Dr. Riley said, two-and-a-quarter percent right now is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we expected in our budget. That is gone, and that has to be made up immediately. We already had, if I look at categoricals for Unit Five, each categorical payment, that's both for, by the way, that's for transportation, special ed costs, one-point-five million dollars per payment. So, if you do the math, and we already had one-point-two million dollars that we're working through because of contractual obligations, we're already at four-point-five-five million dollars before we start July one. So, if we could have some assistance, I would like to say, let's have some balance. I think that we're at the point where, how much testing do we truly need? Do we need it to drive instruction? Exactly what Michael said, absolutely. But can we not do that at the classroom level? But I will say this. I have been in places where unless you have standards in regards to your curriculum, you can say you're teaching calculus, and you can, in one building, and say you're teaching calculus in another building, but proofs in the performance of your students when they leave your high schools and enter the colleges. And I see students that are valedictorians, two different schools. One finishes calculus, both finish calculus. One has to go to school and take remedial math, and the other tests out of Purdue University first-year calculus. There's the difference. That's the importance of having standards to base things on and saying, hey, there needs to be some consistency. My point is, though, there has to be a happy medium someplace here, and I think we've swung a bit too far. We need to swing back and let us, let our teachers teach and let our kids learn, and we have some great, great public schools within the Bloomington Normal and central Illinois area, and I think we can all be very proud of that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Daniel. Now, we, as, you know, as legislators, sometimes we're criticized for not listening, and I think the fact that we've got some of our students up here hopefully suggests that we're listening, especially to our youth, and that, you know, we've got representatives from Normal Community who have been very vocal on some of their kind of points of view on this. Some of them made their way to the Capitol, in fact, and I'm glad to have them participate and welcome them to maybe introduce yourself and then provide a few comments.
Hi, all. My name's Colleen Connolly, and I'm a junior at Normal Community, and I'm also a member of the Bloomington Student Union. As a student who has seen firsthand how our education system affects students and their passion to learn, I'm appalled at those who believe that the way Common Core is implemented is a solution to educating our children equally. Common Core is a product of Race to the Top, which puts students in competition, which puts states in competition for funding based on performance-based assessments. Since Race to the Top is competition-based, Common Core, too, becomes not about collaboration of knowledge and growth of our individual students, but concentrated effort to create diligent test takers. Common Core holds the view that there is only one way in which to monitor a student's progress. Tests are implemented after each unit and are graded to determine not only the student's understanding of the subject, but to evaluate a teacher's capability. High-stakes testing such as Park and SBAC are created, create a dependency and higher emphasis on test scores. This is detrimental to our education system because districts are pressured to teach to the test in order to rank well and hold on to a little funding they have, rather than focusing on student development and nurturing their interests. Moreover, by only admitting one way to judge a child's comprehension of a subject, Common Core is not accounting for those students who struggle in a test-taking environment. Emphasizing the importance of test performance over actual learning diminishes a child's creativity and smothers their natural problem-solving abilities. Denying the growth of these necessary characteristics, Common Core is hindering a child's learning by conforming them. Additionally, Common Core is based on the idea that all students are on the same page before entering a classroom, learn the same way, and thusly should be taught in the exact same speed. These assumptions, as we all know, are not true. Kids do not learn at the same rate. Common Core's mandatory schedule not only hurts those who get left behind after the subjects should supposedly be mastered, but impedes students who are capable of more complex course material and find themselves bored and unchallenged. Common Core, however, fails to account for this and insists that one size fits all. Our teachers, too, are restricted inside the Common Core standards that waste their instructional time by diverting them to fill in meaningless paperwork. Good teachers are hurt when they take on difficult students, because the students' test grades reflect a teacher's perceived ability, and the tests that claim to promote critical thinking are ambiguous at best and by no means reflect real-world expectations of knowledge. Even the most gifted students, as well as their parents and teachers, are confused by these questions. In either case, students are not truly learning, and it's the greatest hypocrisy. We are pressured to exceed above average, but at the same time held back from doing so for the sake of uniformity. Above all, we are promoting a cycle of proficiency and memorization, only for the purpose of regurgitating that knowledge onto a test that proves your intelligence. We are telling our students that grades matter the most and the hours of test prep are worth more than our mental sanity, or if we actually feel engaged and have gained something from our experiences. Say, hey, as long as you get an A, you're smart and on the right track. We are quick to preach that creativity and individuality is everything, but when we are shoving our children into boxes with a one-size-fits-all answer, what are we really saying? A school is not a place of data collection or conformity. It's a place of learning. Let it be that.
My name's Naharika Penmetia. I am a student at Normal Community High School, and I am also a member of the Bloomington Normal Student Union. Now, and as a student, I must say that this Park assessment is completely artificial. It does not encompass all the knowledge a child learns. This test was created by Pearson, a for-profit corporation. This test is meaningless, is a meaningless score that only measures the socioeconomic situation of a student. No test can fully evaluate a student's knowledge, especially a ten-hour test like the Park. Many kinds of assessments have instructional value, not the Park. Teachers and students cannot even see the test to find out what students got wrong on and why, so the tests are of no diagnostic or instructional value. Additionally, the test is seen as a money-making machine for acquisitive companies like Pearson, who benefit enormously from administering these tests. Evaluation of education should not be in the hands of private companies. Complying with Pearson will deteriorate the quality of our education. While there is no exact amount of what Pearson might be acquiring, the profit is extremely large. However, more and more states are seeing the faults with Park testing, and as a result, fourteen out of the twenty-five states have already dropped the Park in the past year. State testing is used to rank and label schools and students. Next year, low Park scores will be used to justify closing public schools in low-income areas and replacing them with charter schools, which are publicly-funded private schools. The rate of charter school expansion is growing exponentially and will continue to grow now that the new state assessment Park is so developmentally inappropriate, confusing, and difficult. Most students are predicted to fail. More charter schools will just mean more profit for businesses and less quality education for the neediest of students. Millions of dollars are being sent to issue the Park exam. This money could be going to other areas that truly propel your child's learning and making school a place where your child can flourish. As a student myself who is involved in many extracurricular activities, it breaks my heart that many of those clubs have barely any funding. In fact, my speech team this year couldn't go to three of our competitions because of inadequate funding. An effective way to resist these detrimental effects is to refuse testing. In Illinois, students have the right to refuse state tests. More people than ever across the state and all around the country have been deciding to stand up for public education and refuse Park. Many people in Bloomington Normal already refused Park during the first round of testing. There are no negative consequences for students. Administrators may say that refusing the test will hurt your school. However, that is not true. The DESE has pledged that schools will not be held accountable if students refuse. No sanctions will be administered and no funding will be lost. No Child Left Behind requires that all students test at least ninety-five percent of their students to make adequate yearly progress or else face sanctions. However, Illinois is one of forty-one states that has a waiver against it, which eliminates sanctions brought to school that don't make adequate yearly progress. Parents, the HB 306 bill will effectively allow you to opt your child from this exam. Right now, students may refuse to test themselves, which is problematic, especially if your child has a mental or physical disability that would prevent the child from refusing. I would urge you to call your state legislators and encourage them to support this bill. Until then, parents are encouraged to send a notice of refusal to their child's principal. So, now is the time. We need to stand up for all students who are experiencing an unprecedented transformation in education through high-stakes testing. Our refusal is a powerful testament against Common Core. Students are the base of the education system. When foundations, when the foundation refuses to comply, then those at the top are forced to listen. By refusing Park, we deny testing companies the data that they will use to hurt and privatize public education. When enough people refuse, we invalidate the whole test.
Hi.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry. Hi, I'm Ashley Kennedy. I am a senior at Normal Community High School as well. So, college readiness is something that's been brought up a lot regarding Park. College readiness. A score does not represent how ready a student is. College readiness is a combination of multiple things like creativity, individuality, determination, problem-solving skills, and innovation, things that Park and Common Core doesn't measure. There's a multitude of successful people in the world who weren't deemed college-ready by a test. Park is an unreliable test funded by a corporation. It isn't stimulating the minds of students, and I, along with many others, do not see its use in curriculum. School is a place where creativity should flourish, not a place where ability is confined to performance on a test.
Okay. Next up is George Schlott from ACT, and then after that, we're gonna go to questions.
Good evening, and I hope to keep this short and brief. I have a colleague that told me I can't introduce myself in less than three minutes, so we may be in trouble. Before working at ACT, this is my ninth year working there. Before that, I spent thirty-eight years trying to get out of Plainfield High School and also spent about twenty-five years as a counselor at Joliet Junior College. So, I got to see both the secondary to the post-secondary movement. So, I was working at Plainfield State Learning Standards at that point, and an assessment system that I think Richard talked about came about called the Prairie State Achievement Exam, which at that time was a combination of ACT on day one and the work keys exams on day two. And the design was to measure our students' college and career-ready. Now, I, at that time, I agree. I didn't think that that was going to be the best way to test students, and yet, a lot of folks say that it was really a worthwhile experience, and we were able to show by working with, with schools and districts that we would be able to advance the, the students relative to the college and career-ready continuum. ACT developed college and career readiness as part of our system about six years before Common Core was something that we talked about. As part of that, we had learning standards that we developed relative to the way our test is designed, called the ACT College Readiness Standards, which are the descriptions of things that students should know and be able to do in English, math, social studies, and science. And once we measure that, then we have some idea of where students are relative to that college and career-ready framework. ACT also has a series of benchmark scores which identify the point at which students need to be in order to be in that trajectory to be college and career-ready. So it was an 18 in English, a 22 in math, and now a 22 in reading and a 23 in science. And that talks about making students ready to enter college and to enter credit-bearing courses without taking remedial classes. As we move forward, you know, we looked at ACT as an assessment system, and in my school, when we got results back, we said, well, how many kids are prepared or unprepared or college-ready, not college-ready? How do we move that bar? And so we began to look at scores. But if I look at junior scores, I only have a couple semesters in order to remediate those deficiencies, getting them more ready for those entry-level college courses or for workforce training. Therefore, that's why ACT developed a longitudinal, a vertically-aligned or longitudinal system using those standards all the way back to grade eight called Explore and Plan. We've now broadened that, that spectrum of testing to a longitudinal assessment system based upon the standards down to grade three. So we know from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, in those four academic areas, are students on that trajectory to be college and career-ready. We have a system much, much like PARC, computer-based or paper pencil, that gives us that, that information about our students' on-course for being college-ready. Ours, I, you know, I kind of call it the gold standard of readiness because at the conclusion or the top, which is the ACT, students do receive a reportable ACT score. So Prairie State ended last year. There was some concern whether we would test with ACT or put it back on the backs of the, the parents and the students. The state did pay for ACT assessment this year, and again, we're at the question of will, will that move forward next year, or will the state, again, pay for that college and career-ready assessment? So, thank you very much and have a good night. Thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you, George. So we're going to move to the public comments section of this, and I, and I want to just preface this with a couple of things. First of all, and I've had plenty of communications with some of the panel members, some of those who are guests, this is, and I understand some of you may want to use it for this, but the purpose for this, at least for, for myself and Senator Rose as we're bringing this together, was to be an educational forum where we can understand where we're at as a state. There are, you know, I cannot tell you the number of constituent contacts for which I get and probably Senator Rose gets from parents and others who are confused, if not frustrated, by what they know as Common Core and PARC. So we have a forum like this. Hopefully, you've been able to understand a little bit better, kind of what we're talking about when we talk about Common Core and PARC. But I also want it to be an educational opportunity for us, and we've heard some good comments, I think, already from both our students and our administrators, you know, kind of the, okay, now that we're at where we're at, what do we do with this? Where are our priorities? You know, is there an opportunity to reevaluate and reprioritize? Many are aware that I've got a school funding bill that we're trying to direct dollars to where we need that. We need to give our, our school districts the tools to be flexible at a local level to make some of these decisions. So, so this is not, the intention here was not to have a forum where we are viewed as complaining about the state of affairs, given we've taken votes on this stuff. We've taken votes over the last few years. We've cast our opinion, but the, but the goal of this point is learn and figure out how we move forward. So with that, I invite you to come up. There's no screening process. We're just going to go back and forth. I'll give you, you know, my main thing is, I don't want to have 10 minutes of opinion versus maybe 120 seconds. Tell us what's on your mind, and I will go from there. So let's start over here. Ma'am, go ahead.
He was first.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to second what Dr. Riley said, that I really wish the panel had some teachers.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, Rich Baldwin. Can I just pull this off?
Sure.
Rich Baldwin, I'm a teacher at Bloomington High School. I'm the head of our social science department. I'm also the president of our local teachers' association. I've been at the school for 20 years, and I'd like to second what Dr. Riley said about I really wish there were teachers on the panel, because I'd like to share with you a little the effect that this is having on our ability to prepare our students. First, in relation to something that Dr. Daniel said, I'm on our, our schools committee that is developing the student growth piece that's going to be part of the teacher's evaluation moving forward, and the crazy thing about PARC is it doesn't count. As it's currently given, you cannot use it as a student growth measurement. So it would have been nice that if we were going to create a system that was going to measure teachers' abilities through tests, and then you're going to create PARC, that you would have at least created something that would have counted in both areas, and we didn't do that. Okay? But more so than that, the impact this is having on the classroom, I'm a social studies teacher and I'm a coach. When I first got into the career 20 years ago, people were clamoring, you've got to stop lecturing, you've got to come up with more creative ways for students to learn. So I've spent the better part of my career doing just that. I can't do it anymore, A, because I don't have time, and B, because I don't have access to our computer labs. I mean, you'd be hard-pressed to find a district that's more advanced than District 87 when it comes to technology, and we're locking up all of our computer labs for PARC testing. We can't do some of the creative things that we used to do. Another piece that I'd like to add, though, is at Bloomington High School, we questioned the students' motivation to try on the PARC test when they were putting these computer labs, so we decided we would have teachers proctor the assessments, which I think is a great idea, because then it's, it's our students who are in the lab with them, going through the experience with them. We can kind of encourage them and at least try to encourage them to give their best effort. But here's the effect of that. In order for us to test all our students in the computer lab, I've got some of my English and math colleagues that are being pulled this semester alone, upwards of a dozen days from the classroom. So it's not necessarily the amount of time that the student is absent from that class, but it's the amount of days that the teacher is absent from the class combined with how long the student is absent. And out of a 90-day semester, I've got colleagues that are losing upwards of a dozen days of instruction. I personally teach a AP Government test, and ironically, when the first window of PARC hit, we were doing a unit on, on legislation, or legislators. And, and I, I used to take the, the class to a computer lab. I had a pretty elaborate project that I worked on them with, and trying to explain to them why we can no longer do that in light of legislative decisions that then put this test in place was, it was ironic, but it was also one of those teaching moments where you can kind of explain that sometimes the best legislation doesn't serve the purpose that it was intended to serve, but those are my opinions.
I'm Mary Zabarella Walker, and I have been a teacher since I graduated from ISU in 1983, and a coach and a mentor. I currently am serving as a full-time substitute teacher in District 87 in Unit 5 for the last five years of my teaching career, and I'm in the third of that fifth year. I teach pre-K through 12, and I teach all subject areas. What I'm observing in the classroom is exactly what Dr. Riley said, where, what, what else do you want us to do? Okay? The frustration of the teachers, and that's my concern. There are no, as you said, you wish there were some teachers here. My concern is that we're frustrating our teachers out of the profession, the good ones. Okay? There's always ways to weed the bad ones out, and we know what they are. So, this is my concern, and if there's some way that we can, as you, several of you mentioned, to improve the way we administer or roll out, or however you want to say, implement Common Core, if we can get rid of PARC, okay, so we don't overtest, that would help our profession. It would maintain our teachers that we want to keep. And also, my daughter is a junior at Bradley University for Vocal Music Education. I'd like for her to want to continue teaching her entire career and not leave it and go to something else. So, these are the things that I'm concerned about, and I think overtesting is, may drive our profession in that direction. And to close, I would like to share with you a comment from Gina Barrera. She is the English professor, an English professor at the University of Connecticut, and she simply states that the first question our students should not ask us in any curriculum area is, is this going to be on the test? Is this why I'm learning this? Okay. And also, to restate what she said, what we need to teach them is to be problem solvers and thinkers and critical thinking, and this is not what this testing is all about. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Joanne Plato. I am a teacher in Bloomington District 87. Hi, Dr. Riley. And I am also a mother of a fourth grader in Unit 5. So I come to you with a couple, and a mother of an 18-year-old at a Catholic school in town. I come to you with three different perspectives to consider, and I'll try to keep it as concise as I can. You guys have heard my son's story because it was part of the testimony for HB 306, so if you were there, you heard it. His name is Max. I teach children all day long who are what we would call under-resourced children. They are children that have come to kindergarten not knowing their ABCs, not knowing how to spell their names, and I have seen amazing things that our kindergarten teachers have done in our district to get them to the point where they are just about up with everybody else whose parents have taught them to read the Gettysburg Address before they came to school, right? I've been teaching for 24 years, and what I've noticed over the course of these years is I've been working really hard with NCLB to get those achievement gaps closed, and we have worked as teachers tirelessly to do that. And what I have noticed with the recent institution of Common Core is that we have now blown those out of the water. The people that you want to be college and career-ready, the people that you want to be going to college, we are giving them the wrong message. We are telling them that they are not smart enough to go to college. We are also doing the following. My son has an IEP. We found out last year when he took the ISAT that was aligned to the Common Core standards that it gave us absolutely nothing diagnostic as parents, and it gave his teachers nothing. Yet, he's still forced to take it because I asked to opt out. I was told I could not, and I'm not going to tell a fourth grader with, to disrespect his teacher and say, no, I'm not going to take this test. Think about a nine-year-old going into a test and refusing to take it. High schoolers, absolutely. You're not going to tell an eight and nine-year-old kid to do that without feeling like a terrible parent. So I am fully in, in full support of the opt-out bill. My other son, here's my perspective, fantastic ACT scores, tremendous kid. Now, how am I going to pay for college? Can I ask you, college and career-ready, how do we teach kids how they're going to get into college, and how do we find ways for their parents to pay for it because it's backbreaking? So, I hear a lot of rhetoric about how are they doing in math, how are they doing in reading, but how are their work ethics? How are their, their work skills? How is their time management? Because if you don't have that, you don't graduate from college. And I'm talking to you as a person with three degrees and National Board certification. So what I'm asking is, don't just look at children, but look at individual children, please. We do that a lot in District 87. We look at data very carefully. I am going to say I'm wary and interested in how the PARC data is going to come back to us. So I don't want to make a final judgment on that. I will say, it was hard to watch the students take the first round of PARC, and now we're coming up again at the end of April and doing it. So, thank you very much.
Back 20, 20 years or so ago, I was in, oh, I'm sorry, Lane Hansen from Bloomington. Used to be in real estate, and one of the first questions that I often had that I remember from people, especially moving to town, is which, which school district is the best, better school district? And I used to be very honest. I told them, yes. And that was true. The school districts in central Illinois, I've, I've not heard any bad things. We have phenomenal education here. I mean, it just, we're, we're very blessed. My son goes to U-High, which is, I think, a crown jewel of Illinois, the lab schools here at, at ISU. They're phenomenal. Dr. Daniels, Dr. Daniels made the, the comment about being over-assessed and people from other countries coming here and wanting to, if I, if I understood you correctly, wanting to learn about how, you know, get this, this creativity and this critical thinking that we do in our education. We've got all these fantastic schools, but because there are some schools in, in various places that aren't doing well, they want to force everybody to upend the apple cart and do things differently. Is there anybody that that makes sense to? If so, explain it to me, because to me, it makes absolutely no sense. There's the old saying, throwing out the baby with the bathwater. It doesn't make sense. Let the schools that are performing well keep doing what they're doing. Learn from them. Let the poor-performing schools learn from them. Don't make everybody retool and reprocess when they're doing a great job to begin with. Thank you.
I live in Carlock. I am retired from Illinois State University, and for over 30 years, I taught courses, content courses, not education courses, but content courses, to some mighty fine future teachers. I, I cannot begin to tell you what fantastic teachers we were turning out, especially in about the upper 20 to 30% of our graduates. And having heard from some of them, I'm here to represent their points of view and give you a little bit of information that really hasn't been brought up, I think, thoroughly by the panel, except for the students, who I want to commend for very fine statements. I know your teachers are proud of you, let me tell you. Anyway, the first concern is that, you know, is with the, with the standardized testing being misused and being used to, to evaluate teachers. You know, like I can say to you, teach me something. Hey, but I don't want to learn. My mind is, you know, not only out to lunch, it's out the door, it's down the street. Maybe, maybe I am incapable because of such a sterile childhood, I can't learn. But now, I'm going to be penalized if I can't make you learn. So how is Common Core supposed to make this any better? Well, teachers get fired, we go down the, you know, because they can't teach to, you know, everybody and make them, you know, turn them into Einsteins and go down the road a few years. Now we've got Common Core implemented, and how are, how are the schools doing any better job of teaching the, the students who can't learn? The ones who really need the special help, that take more of your time than anyone else? How, you know, what's happened? I'll tell you what's happened, and it's already started. They're being pushed out of the school system. One, one of my people tells me that it just disturbs her to see schools systematically trying to get the lower-performing students out the door, make them stop coming to school, and then they don't take the test, and the school averages can go up, and so maybe they can save their jobs. That's terribly disappointing, and it's only going to get worse. They don't want to be turned, you know, the school closed, turned into a charter school, and what's going to happen when you turn into a charter school? The charter schools don't accept those kids either, and the charter schools aren't going to do one bit better, one bit better than the public schools are doing now. So we, and I was sort of disappointed on the part of the, you know, of the principals here, that you didn't express concerns about what this is doing to your faculty. here, that you didn't express concerns about what this is doing to your faculty. Aren't you concerned that these people are going to be fired because the standardized testing is being used for something it can't, you know, can't evaluate? What are you doing to protect your faculty? And we know, you know, we've seen where it's happened, you know, that when schools have been closed down, people, you know, good teachers have, you know, their careers are over. So, something needs to be done. The, the loss of teaching and instruction time due to, due to the testing, I think, has been thoroughly covered, but that was a major issue that I was asked to present. And finally, a very fine teacher said to me that, if I could convey to you one thing, and this is picking up on what the students said, that the only way that you're going to beat this, because we're not going to beat it, you know, the state governments are not going to stand up, we're not going to beat it in the legislatures unfortunately, the only way to defeat this thing is, don't take the test. Just don't.
Let's get to it.
Yeah, that's the wisdom of some very fine teachers. And I just want to pass that on to you.
Thank you.
I'll just leave it here. Hi, my name's Ishan Singh. I am a first-year student at Harlan Community College. I'm 18-years-old. I'm also an organizer with the Bloomington Normal Student Union. So, I came to this little meeting tonight, and based off the flyer, it seemed to be more of a pro-C common core type of meeting. That was what I thought at first glance. But so far, I have not heard a single proponent of, well, I mean, some, like, like you've, like, we've had proponents of the standards themselves, but it seems like everyone here seems to dislike the PARC in some way, which was very interesting to me. So, I just want to make one thing clear, is that while the Common Core standards themselves, like, I've read through them, you know, I've talked to teachers who've, like, read through them, and they're pretty good, you know, like, they're rigorous. So, like, the standards themselves, like, they're fine, you know, they're rigorous, like, the English standards, you know, they're open-ended, so teachers have a chance, like, you know, to play around, like, you know, use their own teaching styles with the standards. But at the same time, we need to remember that you cannot have the Common Core standards without standardized testing. When the standards were pushed on all 50 states back in 2008 with Race to the Top, schools were not evaluated based off, you know, how teachers were teaching, they were evaluated based off of their test scores. So, above all else, we need to understand that, you know, the Common Core standards, it honestly doesn't matter what they say, all that matters is what, how students are testing. That's all the state government cares about, that's all national government cares about. They don't care about the standards, they just care about the test scores. So, if you do not support the PARC, you do not support Common Core, I just, that is just a fact. And so, based off of that, it doesn't seem like any of the student superintendents here support Common Core. So, why are we, why are we here? Like, I have not heard a single proponent of PARC. I mean, what is the conversation here? If we're all against it, what are we doing to defeat it? Like, a lot of the superintendents, like, they're trying to, you know, live with it and move past it, but above all else, we have so much support against all this stuff, so why can't we actually get rid of it? Why can't we, like, implement an educational system that, you know, provides us equitable funding? We all want equitable funding, why can't we get that? Why can't we balance, you know, assessment and proper education? Yeah.
I want to make sure we, we keep plenty of time for the public and for our administrators who may want to respond to that, I want to make sure to give you a chance. I don't think our administrators necess, and I don't want to speak for you, but I don't think they were here to necessarily give comment, you know, in favor of or opposed to Common Core or the PARC test. They're merely providing us some of their observations. Remember, you know, they're living with the rules that are set by the federal government and the state. And I think we all commend them for doing that very well here locally. So, with that, I'll go to the next, but make sure, if our administrators want to respond, we'll make sure to carve out some time at the end there.
My name is Chris Baldwin. I bring 22 years of teaching and 17 years of parenting to this microphone. I teach in District 87 here in town. I live, eat, and breathe Common Core. The end. I am on our district curriculum committee that has been in charge of implementing, been in charge of aligning our standards, been in charge of rewriting our report cards so that it is all lined up. I am extremely proud of our work. I am extremely proud of what our students do. I'm extremely proud of what our administrators have done to support us in that work. And I want to be really clear about the, the purpose of Common Core. It is a collection of standards. It does absolutely nothing to mandate testing. There is no piece of Common Core that states that children need to be tested at the end of each unit, that children need to be tested every Thursday at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's, that's not in there. And I know because, I can't say I have them memorized, but I can very clearly flip to every single standard in my flip chart, because that's what I do. And I do it because I feel passionate about it. I do it to help support my colleagues, and I do it to support our students and to be sure that each student has access to the best learning possible.
Hello, my name is Ray Straw. I'm an engineer retired from Caterpillar. First of all, I wanted to commend these students and the other 20 who said by walking, "This isn't a good idea." And these don't appear to be people that hate school and hate testing, okay? So, they have some credibility, and I thank you for your actions. One point comes up in, you know, with all these squeezes we're under in the state for a variety of reasons, this appears in a form of an unfunded mandate, or I should say, underfunded. Because even if there's federal money come in, it displaces resources from other things that we are mandated to provide. And I think this is a crime. I also think it's a crime that there's a single set of standards for everybody and everywhere. I don't think one shoe can fit everyone. But anyway, as far as unfunded mandates, the other evening, I heard Evelyn Sanguinetti, our Lieutenant Governor, explain that she was helping select people to run these state agencies, and her new assignment is unfunded mandates. So, I think there's, there's some leverage you have there to say, "Hey, we need help on this unfunded mandate." Because it's displacing stuff from our schools. So, I would urge you that to be considered as another way to fight it, as well as probably equally the way these students have shown. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Russell Long, and I'm on the Board of Education at Clinton. We're a community with about 2,000 students, and I just wanted to talk a little bit about funding and PARC testing. We recently just wrapped up our PARC testing, and I've heard from many of the teachers how they had three very unproductive weeks with the kids. The kids were not getting the normal instruction. I know personally from seeing my kids come home, they were not having the homework, they were not getting the instruction and having the follow-up homework for three weeks. We, as a board in Clinton, we had to forego some map testing because of the PARC testing. We thought there was just too much testing going on. We didn't want to take another week or two of map testing, even though that is something that we can use to figure out how the kids are progressing throughout the year and actually use it to their advantage to help them for the next year and get them in the right classes. PARC testing information is not going to be back to us by the time we make our schedules in June and July. So, that's my synopsis on PARC. And then, secondly, we've talked about funding. I actually had a question for Senator Barakman. We're a district under Senate Bill 1 that's estimated to lose $1.8 million, and I just wanted to see if you could tell us anything about Senate Bill 1403. Is there winner-loser scenarios, or how is that thought to be progressing?
Want to include that in my wrap. But I'll do that.
My name is Gail McDermott. I'm a teacher in Unit 5. I've been doing this for 36 years now. Started when I was 12, and that is my story. This also, Chris, these are my PARC resources, Chris Baldwin. We would look at these constantly every day to design our curriculum. This PARC, I mean, I'm sorry, Common Core standards are not a curriculum, and that's what everybody has to understand. These are skills that we want students to be able to achieve by certain grade levels. And they are a little more explicit than the old Illinois State standards. And as a teacher, we need this type of framework. We need these, some sort of standard to tell us what we, what our children should be learning by a certain time. Now, I am also a special education teacher, so I understand the variations of, and differentiation needed, and the variation of student learning within each grade level. So, we try to address each student's needs, but still get them to learn these skills. So, the standards, you know, we need a framework. I, again, and I want to applaud my coworkers in Unit 5 for what they have done to align report cards and work on defining the material to teach these standards. And that, I think, is part of the problem, that, that's why we're there on weekends, et cetera, et cetera. I applaud the gentleman who mentioned, "We really don't take into account poverty." The United States is number two on a list of the organization of economically-developed nations, countries. We're number two with having the highest level of children poverty. Romania is the only other country that beats us. But in spite of that, we're still climbing on those, when we, you know, we, we talk about comparing scores to the rest of the world, we're climbing on that list. We also test all of our students, as opposed to certain percent, you know, other countries will only perhaps take the top percentage of their students to take the international tests. And that's when everybody says, "Well, schools are failing because we're not as good as Finland." Well, when you, and when you extrapolate for poverty and compare the same poverty levels for the, the countries that are on that list, United States is number one in reading, science, and math. So, poverty is an issue. The other, I also don't agree with the statement that someone said, "That PARC is here and we have to accept it." PARC is an awful test, awful, awful, awful test. Developmentally inappropriate. The wording on the tests, I had to read some of the tests to one of my, to some of my students in fourth grade. The wording is terrible. States who have done this for a couple of years had a 70% increase in lack, student scoring less than proficient. There was a lot of, in the state of New York, there was a lot of, I guess, arguing and discussion from parents. And our National Education Secretary, Arne Duncan's comment to parents who were complaining in New York was, and these are his words quoted, and you can Google it, these are not my words, "While it looks as if a bunch of white suburban parents are going to find out that their kids aren't as smart as they thought they were." So, that's coming from the national level in response to the awful PARC testing. So, I really, standards, we need, PARC testing is awful.
Thanks, Gail. We're going to hear from everyone who's in line and try to get you out quickly.
I'm Dashie Yates, and I'm a sixth-grade student at Olympia Middle School. And some of the questions they ask just in the classroom during, like, with the Common Core and everything, are just kind of pointless. Like, there's no need for these questions to be asked. Like, they don't ask this actual question, but 2 plus 2, why does that equal 4? Well, that's just basic math. That's just how it works. Why do we need, why do we need to know that this is how it is? And on the PARC testing, they ask you to explain every step you do. And I do understand that if the tests were given back to the teachers, and then, that would be helpful for seeing what the student did wrong and, you know, how they need to help that. But they don't, and you really don't need to explain some of the things. And yeah, it's just, I don't really know what else to say. So, some of these questions, they just need to get rid of because it's there, we know it's there. So, I mean, like, they answer the questions, and why does that equal that? Because that's how it is.
We haven't got the Common Core math since the beginning, when you showed the problem, where they used the timeline. And you realize that problem, didn't you had, didn't even have to, it didn't require a bowering, you just had to subtract the simple numbers. How ridiculous. And one gentleman said that he didn't object to Common Core. Well, I sure objected to the math part, not teaching the timetables. And what I understand is, they don't want the children to learn the timetables. You tell me, how do you do fractions if you don't know your timetables? I've discussed this with several teachers. I'm retired, of course, for a number of years. The other one said, "We should just be glad we're out of it, but pity the kids. What are they learning? They're not learning much."
I'm Katie McHugh. I live in Mohammed. I have five children, ages 8 to 23, and I'm also a substitute teacher. I've been subbing for the last 10 years in the Mohammed Seymour School District, and I have seen a dramatic change in the last two years in the kind of curriculum that's being covered. And so, you're talking about getting facts, here you go. In our, one of our, in all of our junior high math room, math classrooms, the following signs are posted. "No one is, no one alone is as smart as all of us together. Clear off tables before getting to work so you can see everyone's paper. Do not leave anyone behind or let anyone work ahead. Your team is not done until everyone is done. No one alone is as smart as all of us together." Oh, I did that one already, sorry. And "Teachers are responsible for actively guiding, supporting, and summarizing, not teaching." And I had an eighth-grade teacher, a math teacher, tell me the other day, "I'm really not necessary anymore. I don't get to teach. And when I do stand up and teach, they look at me funny because everything is supposed to be done by the students and groups on their own. And they're supposed to figure it out, and their homework includes, part of their homework every day at the junior high level is material they've never seen. They're supposed to go home and figure it out, which, if they don't understand what they're doing, is spinning their wheels. And I'm very concerned about how that is working out for the kids." I'm also currently educating a homebound student, and so, I'm doing eighth-grade Common College Prep Math with her, it's what it's called. And it is very confusing and difficult to navigate through because none of it, there's no flow and there's no mastery. You jump from subject to subject to, you know, idea to idea without any mastery. And we have both found it very confusing. I also wanted to let you know that there's no incentive for the kids that really know what they're doing or who, or who we would consider to be at the higher end of the spectrum. Because they are saddled with a team on a daily basis, they are stuck going slowly with that team, and the testing is all done in groups. So, it's my understanding that everyone at the table takes the test, but occasionally, a teacher takes one kid's test, and everybody in that group gets that grade. There, there's no longer personal achievement in the math at the junior high level. I also am very alarmed, and I want to, you put up a thing, you were talking about the dark material in the literature. I have seen this creep in the last couple of years. I don't know where this literature is coming from. Common Core says there's no curriculum, but there are lists of books they, that they recommend, and they're very dark. They include, at the seventh-grade level, the kids in our district are reading books about girls who, because they're slaves, their faces are branded and they pass out. And these are girls that are the same age as the kids that are reading the books. So, if you're a child who reads vividly and gets into your characters, these are disturbing novels for them to read. There's another one that's all about cannibalism, the main character eats his friends, or, there's just a lot of dark, dark stuff. In the fall, I taught 10 weeks sophomore English for a teacher who had a baby. And again, the material was very disturbing. The book that we were, we didn't read the whole book because our district doesn't let the kids read the whole book because it's such a disturbing book. But it includes suicide, rape, pedophilia, vicious wife abuse, murder, and beheading. And I don't know what it replaced, but it replaced something that, because my older children did not read it, and my younger child will not be reading it because I'm going to pull her out for English. I'm just very concerned about how things are changing. Also, cursive writing is being eliminated from the elementary grade levels. And there are many, many studies that talk about how cursive writing is very important for brain development. And I'm also concerned it means they won't be able to read the original documents of our government. So, I think that'll...
My name's Robert Conley, and I'm a retired teacher. I've taught for 33 years in almost every level. And so, I've been retired a few years now, so I feel like I could speak pretty plainly. And I know everybody's kind of tired, so I had a whole list of things I was going to say, but I just want to get down to some basic concerns and questions for the panel. And I want to thank Senator Barakman and Senator Rose here for having this panel in the first place and letting people talk and not just listen. I really appreciate that. Everything that's been said on this panel, I totally agree with. Everything that's been said on this panel, I totally agree with. All very good, insightful things that have been said, from the students to the superintendents to, to the senators. So I guess what it comes down to for me, because I've been in countless seminars on this, countless panels, going back to the beginning of ISAT with the state of Illinois. And I don't know how to stop this. It, it needs to stop. There's too much testing. As a teacher, the first day we come in, we get huge binders. It's like Parks and Rec with Leslie with all these binders coming in and throwing them on the desk. We don't have time for that. We're trying to go to the bathroom. We're trying to have something to eat. We want to have standards. We don't, we're not afraid of testing. We want to show the country and the state how well we can teach. But there's too much of it. And when I talk with superintendents and principals like you guys up here and politicians and senators, and I say, "How can we stop this?" And in private, while we have a drink at a bar or coffee somewhere, and we sit down and they, and they say, "Bob, you know, we, we totally agree with you. And, and we want to stop it." But it's inevitable, they say. It, it's too big. We can't stop it. And honestly, I've heard this many, many times, that the federal government's too big. We, we have to have the funding. That Arnie Duncan is driving this, that Bill Gates is putting money into this, that it's, it's too big to stop. So I guess my question is, how many people on the panel here think that we can at least reduce the testing, stop some of it, and come up with some common sense things that we can all live with? So maybe at the end, somebody can address that to give some optimism here because it, it's hard for me to see, and I want to see it. So thank you very much.
My name is Shayne McReynolds, and I am just a mom, I guess. I've got three kids in Unit Five. My first grader already told me she's not taking the tests when she gets into third grade. My third grader took the first round. She's refusing the second. And my freshman said, with a solubee in geometry, said it was the hardest test he's ever taken. And he was pulled out of a class. He is failing to take this test. I guess my question is, I heard eventually that these tests will be required for graduation from my school. I don't know if anybody can correct me on that or if it's true, but if that happens, I can see the graduation rates plummeting. So that's just my opinion. Thank you.
I'm Elaine Trossino, and I'm a new resident of Bloomington about six months ago. Came from Pennsylvania where I was part of an active group that was trying to get the word out about Common Core because as it was slowly enrolling in our district, there were a lot of complaints, a lot of upset children. New York was a year ahead of us. We were kind of following their lead. Therapists were at an all-time high for young children that were being asked to essentially walk before they could even crawl. A lot of these standards, and I, I know we're all for standards, but I think it's a very misleading and kind of inappropriate word for what this is. It's a really big machine. It's not just about education. It's about getting your information and data mining. My son was in a pilot test when he was 10 years old, and before the test even started, there were questions like, "Do you live in a house or an apartment? Do you rent? Do you own? How many bedrooms? How many bathrooms? How many computers do you have?" So of course, you know, I'm trying to be very involved in my children. I try and keep up with what's going on. I call the principal. She has no idea about these questions. Okay, I need the next person's name. Well, I eventually tracked it down to Washington, to the NAEP, where I know this is all part of the whole Common Core. We're going to collect data. We're going to see where the funds are going to get allocated. And it's, it's a shame, every district can't get what they need. And I realize that you're in a tough spot here because you're looking at it from a numbers perspective. But from the parent's perspective, children are being inappropriately educated with information that really doesn't matter. These three young ladies I am super impressed with, you folks are clearly stepping outside the box. And I think we need to make sure that the youth today are continually encouraged to step out, speak their minds, and to try to make a difference. Because if we all fall in line and act like robots, we're not going to have a generation ahead of us that's going to make a difference and that's going to lead our country. So it's a concern all across the board, from the education, the financial, the data mining. And we look to you as our elected officials and as our leaders in our school districts, and we do have a voice, and we can stand tall. And legislatively, yes, that's a huge obstacle, but I know we can get there. But opting out of park is a huge start for all of us. But we do, I think, turn it to you now and say, "What will you do for us?" Because not one person here has come to you and said, "Yes, this is great. We want more of it." And there's reservations from all of you. I realize you can't all put it out there, but I, I think your silence says a lot as well. So hopefully, we can all work together and try to make, you know, all the changes that we need for our children. Thank you.
So, so we're going to wrap. I'm going to give the administrators first an opportunity, you know, keep it brief, maybe 60 seconds. And then we'll go to our students. Chapin, so, Minister, go ahead. For those who want to comment.
I just want to say, I think I speak for all the administrators up here. We're parents, too. And my children go to the district in which I work in. And I care very deeply about my children, just about as deeply as I care about anything in this entire world. I can't think of anything that I care more about than my two kids. I have a fifth grader and a seventh grader. And so I'm very aware of what they're experiencing, what their frustrations are. We're all parents, and we didn't get into this to be in a numbers game. It's just part of the business that we have to deal with. But first and foremost, each and every one of us cared very deeply about kids. We care very deeply about people. This is a people business. And so we want what's best for kids, and I think, I feel very comfortable speaking for all my colleagues on that one.
Students, yeah, go ahead.
I'll go ahead and address something. Just because the Common Cores are in place, it doesn't mean that the teachers aren't supplementing it. So with, with your concern about the timetable, oh, don't worry, we're still teaching it. It just gives us a framework to meet the goals of the ACT for our students to get into colleges. But without the foundation of your timetables and your math facts, they won't make it exactly. You've got to have a foundation before you can build a good house. That's right. They've got to know their facts. So don't worry. I, I can speak for most elementary educators. That's still going on.
Students, any parting words?
I just want to say thanks for, for all the parents coming here. It really means a lot that so many people care about like our education, the students' education, the education in the future. And yeah, a powerful testament to this would be opting out your child from the park. And if, if they can't, then just refusing this exam.
Senator Rose.
Thank you for everybody being here. I want to thank my colleague, Jason Barakman, for putting this together. I'm merely the guest, and I, I appreciate all of you being here. Jason has been a leader in education issues in Springfield, particularly on education funding. He is authoring the Vision 2020 bill on school funding, which is, I think, a far superior product to other bills that are out there, mainly because it's driven by educators themselves and not by legislators. And I will, actually did, am a co-sponsor of that bill and look forward to it. I want to just say a couple of things. I, I'm very proud of the fact that I've been to every school in 10 counties that I represent. And Route Nine is the northern end of my district, two miles, three miles east of Bloomington, Normal, and then go all the way down to Terre Haute, Indiana, and then back over to almost I-70 at the bottom of Shelby County. And I'm very proud of the fact that the schools that are in my, that are in those 10 county district, I've been to every one of them. And every time, I learn something. And so I want to thank, is it Mr. Colby in the back, the social studies teacher? Colby? Sorry. I appreciate you coming up and the rest of the teachers that spoke because I always learn something at all these things. And when I go visit my schools, I learn something. Interestingly enough, tonight, you talk about misplaced priorities, and you talk about this being the last year the ACT is going to be offered in Illinois. You know, you talk about testing, well, now it's going to be double testing for the college bound kids, going to have to go get their ACT separately next year. But he talked about, they already have a longitudinal data system in, at the ACT, and now it's going to be down to third grade. Oddly enough, the state of Illinois is spending your money to recreate its own longitudinal data system and track based upon new park. So again, when you talk about money being spent and where it's being spent, you know, we're recreating the wheel, as I think that gentleman was his metaphor. The LDS that we're doing is, you know, it's not the biggest ticket item in Springfield, but it's a million dollar plus ticket item. And, you know, over several years, it's more than that. But, you know, when you look around, and, and I, I think a lot of what I had thought was confirmed tonight, but, you know, the biggest takeaway, and I think the young man over here said it best, like, you know, why are we here? For me, there were 29 of us that voted no on park, or actually, quite frankly, weren't so much voting no on park as we were just saying, "Hey, this isn't ready yet. Our schools aren't there technologically. The tests aren't ready. There's been no, you know, sample size that's been taken. There's been no, it's not ready." And the superintendent of schools was keyed up, and, and a lot of other people were keyed up. And there's 29 legislators, you know, that had, that opposed that, including myself and Senator Barakman. We have to raise awareness about this. I mean, everybody here tonight has acknowledged some level of issue somewhere that needs to be, be fixed. But it's going to take more than 29 legislators to get there. And so frankly, the, part of the reason why I accept the invitation to come here is because I want to raise awareness. I want to use the people in the back of the room with the cameras and, you know, the, the, the news folks here to raise that awareness. The last thing, and I, and I think we are having the Atlas Shrugged moment in Illinois. The mandates are deafening. I mean, they are breaking the back of not just K-12, but virtually any local government body. I am extremely proud to be one of a very, very small number of people that have actually voted for a mandate relief bill. Did I like everything in that bill? Probably not. But you know what? We can't afford to keep doing it. We can't keep telling these people, "Hey, you got to teach this, you got to teach that, and not pay you to do it." You got to have mandate relief. I think Senator Barakman was on that committee and voted for it as well. There were very few of us that did that. This is a golden opportunity, in my opinion, to, over the next, you know, year and a half to two years, to exercise in a substantive conversation on serious mandate relief. Now, you know, we can joke and say that getting rid of Leaf Erickson Day doesn't really save you much, but there's a lot of mandates out there that are very, very expensive on local school districts. And as somebody who represents over 50 local school districts, I've had that conversation with every one of my superintendents and virtually every one of the teachers that I've talked to when I was in their school buildings. So again, this is an opportunity. You know, park to me is, is one of the many mandates. When you talk to my super, or my principal from Prairie of Ogden, you know, just another cost that comes down from, from on high. Now, in this case, some of this came from the federal government, too, but whatever it did, it was not supported with 100% in dollars. So I think the opportunity is here for mandate relief. And I think that as far as the gentleman's question about where do we go, I think that's where we take this entire conversation. You know, local school districts know what's in their best interest for their local citizens and local pupils, and we, we hit the mandate relief thing hard over the next year and a half to two years as we're having all the other conversations in Springfield. And other than that, I just appreciate everybody's, everybody's testimony tonight and the conversation.
Thanks, Chapin. To echo some of Chapin or Senator Rose's comments, first of all, thank you to all who attended. Thanks for those who came forward and spoke. A special thanks to our young people who, who spoke up. It's very encouraging when you see the youth of this state willing to stand up and speak up. And I'm very encouraged that people from our community are doing that here today. So thank you. Thank you, students. Thank you, young people in the crowd. Bob, I took some notes here. Bob, somewhere in the crowd, said, "If you go out for a beer with him, someone will, you know, or a coffee, people will talk to you about where we, you know, what the problem is and where we go." And really, I, I mean, I, I think this is just a philosophical issue that our state is confronted with. And the, the philosophical issue is this, who knows best how to educate our kids? Is it those people in Springfield, and I'm one of them? Is it those people in Springfield who are passing law and setting the rules for what's being done in our classrooms? Or is it our local school boards and our administrators who can best determine how to educate the kids? And we're having that debate constantly in Springfield. Chapin and I sit on the Education Committee, which is unbelievably frustrating, truth be told, to sit and listen to the many ideas, and they're all wonderful ideas. The ideas that come through that committee are all designed to solve a problem. Oftentimes, though, and too often, all we're doing is creating new problems when we're trying to fix the problem that's in front of us. Too many times, we're seeing problems that are coming out of one school district, primarily Chicago Public Schools, which is being addressed by their local legislators in Springfield in the form of a new state law. And until we move away from this philosophy that Springfield knows better than our local districts, we're going to continue to feel frustrated by this. So kudos to all of you for coming out and expressing your views. I'm glad that, you know, we had a good show of the media. This, like Chapin said, this is designed to heighten awareness to some of the issues that we're facing in our school districts so that Senator Rose and I are more equipped when we go back, we go back to Springfield next week. When we go down there, we need to be equipped with all the tools possible to help advocate for you. And some of those tools that are strengthened come as a result of having a town hall like this where we can say, "Look, it's not just our opinion, and I'm a parent, too." Chapin says, "I'm a parent, you know, we sit around our neighborhoods and we talk to neighbors. And you can't find a neighbor who's a parent with a student in a school today who's not talking about this." So I'm, I'm very enthused that you all showed up tonight and have provided us with your views that we can take with us when we go back to the state Capitol. Real quick, for those who are interested in what we're trying to do, do in school funding, absolutely, we've reinserted the edu, the education community into the conversation about how we fund our public schools. And my, my model, and I've got legislation on this, but my model is this, the state of Illinois spends about $6 billion on our almost 900 school districts. When we do it today, we say, "Here's your check," and, "Oh, here's all the strings that are attached to it." So what we're trying to do is reduce some of those strings and give to school districts the dollars that they need. Every district's different. And I look at some of our administrators around here, they'll all tell you, the, the difference between District 87 and Unit Five, let alone if we go over to Leroy or Clinton or up to Lexington, Chicago and the southern part of the state, they're all different. And so we need a funding formula that recognizes those differences, but says, "Districts, here's your money. Now you make the decision. Here's, you, we give you flexibility so that you can make your decisions locally best on your best practices and what you determine is best for your students." So email me, contact me. I'm going to stick around here tonight if you've got any questions on that. And thank you again for, for being here tonight. Appreciate it.